All right, it is 6:00 PM on this February 5th, 2015. I will call this town council work session to order, recognize that there is a quorum present. Welcome all of those in the chambers, those who are tuned in online as well. We would like to recognize that it is our town clerk's birthday today and wish Ms. Mary McKay the best birthday, and we'll sing to her later, we'll spare you all that moment right now. We appreciate all that she brings and all the help that she gives. Ms. McKay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Reed?
Here.
Mr. Dwyer?
Here.
Mr. Parrott?
Here.
Mr. Yolan?
Here.
Mr. Hunter?
Here.
Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Thank you. The only actionable item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented if there are no disagreements.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Declaration of personal interest, does anyone have a declaration of personal interest concerning anything on the agenda this evening? Not hearing any, we will move into the first presentation, we have an infrastructure asset and management plan, presentation by Matt Gross with Hurt &amp; Profit.
Hi, thank you. We just wanted to go ahead and do a brief overview of what we've talked about before.
Yeah, just make sure, sir, I apologize, it's a directional mic, you just gotta kinda make sure you speak into it.
Okay, is this a little bit better? Okay, sorry, I'm not practiced at this. We just want to go over briefly what the history of the project was and some of the brief understanding of what we've found. The purpose of an asset inventory is for tracking, in this case, the water and sewer features that you have, water lines, valves, hydrants, manholes, sewer lines, et cetera. And so you can plan upgrades and replacements, track conditions, repairs, where you're doing all of your repairs in a certain area, and complaints, so that you can track and plan for the future better. All of the assets were ranked based on the condition and criticality, a 12-inch water line is more critical than a 2-inch water line, and so forth. To start with, the town provided their available GIS database, we converted that information to map book for ease of editing by the public works, that they could mark available information on that, and we determined some additional field work would be required. For an example, at the first kickoff meeting, we were told that the town had 283 fire hydrants. At the second meeting, we were told the town had around 300. Public Works indicated they had a map that said they had 400. We actually found over 460. We ended up basically having, driving every town, every street and walking every information and categorized every hydrant, we have a database now that has photographs, it's not really eligible on that, but you can see we wrote down when the fire hydrant was manufactured, who was the manufacturer, what type of fittings were in, what the condition of the manhole was in, or sorry, the fire hydrant was in. All valuable information. Is there a valve to isolate that fire hydrant, or is it connected directly to the main? All information you need to know when you're planning repairs, and for example, some of these fire hydrants have been in your system more than 65 years. And if you put a theoretical lifespan on them, that means you've got fire hydrants that you need to start planning for replacement. We did a similar information for the sewer system, they, we were given a list of about 1,000 manholes, well, we ended up surveying over 1,300. Each one was located in combination with the public works people, and we have to give a lot of thanks to them for helping get people to move cars and other things that were parked on them, and in some cases, providing traffic assistance for being able to get to the ones that were in roads. We did, we have a crew of manhole accreditation certified program inspectors, and they did an evaluation of every manhole in the system, they looked at the condition of the lid, the chimney, the crown, the actual report has more details of what all of these are, and identified every obvious problem with those manholes. And we found, I hate to say it, a lot of problems with some of your manholes, including three that we recommended for urgent repairs. And you can see again, an example, and you can pull it up later, we're gonna provide, we've provided all this information back to be put into your own GIS, so that you can click on it and maintain that information going forward. Again, this is just a screen capture of how we were tracking the information as we went through, so it was available, the public works could see how, where we were going, what manholes we needed assistance with to get access to, some were buried, some were things parked on them, some had asphalt over the top of them. And we used, we worked back and forth with the public works department to be able to get access to those, and they could see where we were and what manholes we needed assistance with as we were going. All that information is supposed to be getting, is getting emailed back, it's about four or five gigs of information to be uploaded to your GIS, and like I said, there's two or three photographs of every manhole, both the surface and the walls and then the bottom. In closing, I was told to keep it short because everybody had a lot of stuff going on. Basically, we included asset estimate for repairs and replacements based on the assets, we recommended some planning based on the age, what you, where you should begin budgeting or thinking about projects due to the age of some of the materials, specifically ones that had obvious leaks or where groundwater was getting into the manholes, you're paying to treat that groundwater, you don't want to do that. So anyway, the data inventory can be used for planning for future needs and projects, capital planning can be used to assist in rate adjustment if you need to adjust rates to be able to pay for these projects, and this is a living database that should be regularly updated as projects are completed, as public works or contractor is adding to the system, it needs to be added to the GIS, it should be added to the asset plan, and that way you have that information going forward. And, do you have any questions, or?
Have any questions for Mr. Gross of this town?
How many were covered with asphalt?
I don't remember the actual number, but I know there was at least 70 that we needed assistance to be able to get access to, including one or two that were underneath a construction pile of railroad ties.
There's several that were out, that we had, we clear different areas, but there were some that we had to take them to that are not on available roadways to get to. Some that were under asphalt are ones we inherited that were done by a private contractor and we took into our system over time. So, some of those things that we didn't have originally mapped out.
Yeah. And in that information, it's all the information on whether or not it's a brick manhole, or it's a block manhole, or whether or not it's a precast concrete, how many holes are in the lids of the manholes, whether, because if you have runoff from the rain running over the top of a manhole, and there's holes in the top, one inch of rain is about 10 gallons a minute going into the system per hole. So if you have a lid with 12 holes, and we found at least one hole, one manhole lid with 12 holes, where water can go into it, that's a lot of water getting into your system. And cheap and quick fixes for that are either replacing the lid or actually just putting in a plastic manhole cup that will fill with three gallons of water, and then it won't continue to go into the manhole. And those are some of the things that we, I tried to identify and put some information on that in the report.
Thank you for that, and for those keeping score at home, just for informational purposes, we're getting ready to have our biannual council retreat this Friday, and last council retreat, this was a hot topic of conversation, that kind of, this asset management plan born of that meeting and a discussion about amongst council and myself, how we need to get a handle on what our infrastructure looked like, how we could get it into a regular CIP, capital improvements project plan cycle, similar to our paving system, and so, once again, a testament to the foresight of this council to decide that that was of importance, and we thank the town administration for jumping on it and getting the ball rolling, and thank you, sir, for the presentation and the work. Do we have any additional questions?
Yeah, one quick one, and it may be you or you either one, does this include any kind of sewer capacity, or was this just facility capacity?
This was just, this was just asset condition, not capacity. That would be creating a sewer model, which is probably one of the next steps if you want to, is you take where the inverts are and the sizes, and you can do a complete capacity analysis of the system.
Of the system?
For a water or sewer.
Gotcha, awesome.
So from a treatment standpoint, we're only at half capacity. We treat about one point, when the university's in, when the university and the college are in session, we treat about 1.1 and 1.2 million gallons a day. Our plan is 2.9 million gallons. So we're, as far as treatment is concerned, we're not at capacity. As far as pump stations are concerned, that's why we have developers tell us how much this is going to bring in capacity for those size pumps and those types of things. But that could be the next one of saying, each pump station, what is the capacity of that pump station, and how much is it already taking on? And then it would, that obviously would assist developers, unlike we can right now, in that they have to calculate how much that is gonna generate.
Overall, when you were doing your inspections as far as with these manholes, with these number of holes in them, was it staggering as far as the number of manholes that had excessive holes as far as where we'd be treating massive amounts of water?
No, to be honest, but I've worked extensively in Southwest and the middle part of the state, and a lot of these systems are older and aging. I'm very happy that you guys were working on this project to try and get a handle on what you need to do, and I would say, I want to say somewhere about 10% of your manholes need some touch, which isn't a horrible number if you think about it, you had 1,300 manholes.
When, when we talk about urgency for some of the necessary repairs, that's something we can address going forward now that we have all this in our database and we're ready to act on these?
Once they're in, well, they're not fully in yet, but once they're in, we'll be able to then start, that's the whole, that was the reason for this, that we can start planning budgetarily how we can do that.
And one of the key features, I think, going forward, be working with your public works department, and when they have a break that they're responding to, you're indicating on that GIS, you can click on that pipe and edit it and say, okay, we had an issue on this date with this pipe, and then going forward, you can start searching your database of what sections of pipe are having more issues, and start focusing that way to develop problems. And also customer complaints, that can also be tracked and getting that information in there. GIS is a great tool for being able to track this information and use it.
Last question, sorry, just, this was all done underground, this is all sewers, everything that had to do with water, we didn't, do we have anything going on to evaluate above-ground sidewalks and other things?
Not that I was involved in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
You want me to leave this here?
Any other questions? Yes, you can turn in the remote. If you can't measure it, you can't improve it, we appreciate you for the work you put in. Next presentation is fire station expansion presentation by Greg Gilbert of Bigno Watkins Hasser Architecture and Interiors.
Okay, well, thank you for being here, this is a presentation for you. Quickly, I'm from Bigno Watkins Hasser Architects, we, I put together a little snapshot there, we've been designing fire stations for over 25 years, have been doing 30 stations, we work in Virginia, West Virginia, and Maryland, we do new construction, renovation, expansion, we do programming, and currently on the books, we've got three, I think what we've listed there, we've got three stations that are in design, one in permit, and then three that are, one in construction, one in permitting. So we're always in the process, we really understand all the growing trends and what the issues are in fire station design. So basically, how we put this study together, we came and we did an onsite survey, spent a day, actually two days, coming around, looking at all the different situations there, we got access through the drawings of the facility, we then put together a program of what the existing facility is, and then, working with the chief, created a new program, what was required to meet their needs. From that information, we put together multiple different concept designs, had a few meetings to figure out what best suited the needs and the operations of the department. From that, we then went and put together what would be a phasing design, understanding the fact that the station would have to remain in operation while there's construction's going on, and then finally ending up putting together an estimated cost of construction, which included not only the cost of construction itself, but also FFNE, and then whatever design costs, so the numbers were presenting to you would be sort of like an all encompassing number.
Greg, I want to say, Mayor, if I could, I didn't do a very, I didn't get to lead in to, to help Greg out with this. As you know, three years ago, I guess it is, we, the, I brought to you all and the council at that time made a decision that we would move forward as a combination fire department, not strictly all volunteer, based on volunteerism and those types of things, and upgrading our service for the citizens and business owners in the community. In doing that, the station was built in 1991, I believe, and it was built as a all volunteer fire station, with, at the time, the inability, or I guess the town at that time from hearing history, didn't want there to be quarters for livability in the, in the fire station. So there's no real living quarters in the fire station. We now have more female volunteers than we have, there's more females in the profession of firefighting than there has been in the past. The women's bathroom does not have a shower. When one of our five female volunteers, it's staying and has to shower after an event, they go tell everybody else in the firehouse, they're going to take a shower, they lock the men's bathroom door and take a shower, not very conducive to the environment in which we are today. You'll see that, next slide, I'm not gonna steal Greg's thunder, but there's, there's a lot of things that, how it was practiced in the past, carcinogens, those types of things were not as talked about, was not discussed in the fire service as a hazard as much as it is today, and what it led to as far as cancers from those that are in the fire service. So, what you're gonna see is a more updated plan, and one that could take us into the future of us as we grow as a community and in the need of fire service. Sorry, Greg, there you go.
What he said. So, yeah, so when we went to the station, yes, the very first thing, it was built as a volunteer, all responding station, so basically, people at night when the alarm went off, it's, you know, what volunteers used to be, you would leave your work, you would leave your house, you would come to the station and then respond. And because of that, when we start designing, looking at the station, saying, hey, it won't meet the needs of a 24/7 operation, there is, like you said before, there is no dedicated bunk areas, there is limited slash no any facilities for females, and there's big lack of concern about how decon and PPE storage is done. And then here's just some pictures, if people have never been in the station, you can see currently, they're actually living, they're sleeping in their meeting room, they have their decon washing is done inside the apparatus bay, they actually have gathering spaces in the apparatus bay, and then all their PPE gear is stored in the apparatus bay. And as we talked about before, all the carcinogenic issues, these are all bad. So, it used to be, in the day, it used to be, if you smelled like smoke, you thought you were doing your job, and today, if you smell like smoke, you're gonna die, because the cancer within firefighters is like 10 times the normal rate of other citizens within the same area. That's because all the stuff in your buildings have lots of chemicals that burn. So, we put together sort of a floor plan, and what we really focused in on was having bunk rooms and shower rooms and laundry rooms, for all sort of, we call it sort of 24/7 mixed gender use, really what happens is, we're really focusing on the fact that you have multiple bunk rooms, typically what happens in multiple bunk rooms is that people who are on the similar apparatus would be in a single room, this allows the fact that if certain pieces of equipment are responding, you're not really waking up the whole station in the middle of the night, you're only waking up those specific people. And then we've moved really away from gang showers, gang bathrooms, and now we have individual sleep showers and toilet rooms, so then the whole sort of mixture of who's in the building doesn't really matter, you could have one shift that's all female and everything works, you have another shift that's all male and everything still works. Then we talked about doing the PPE gear and decon, trying to really talk about separating the cleans parts of the building from the dirty parts of the building. Long time ago, I looked at, discovered something that was really strange, is that PPE gear, the stuff we use to fight fires with, doesn't like sunlight. So, if you're out there and just have your gear out in the apparatus bay and the sunlight is hitting it, it's degrading the chemicals and coatings in it, and at the same token, every time a piece of equipment leaves, it comes back, it's now putting carcinogenics onto the gear. So, we've really been focusing on creating spaces that all that gear is stored in a separate room, that room is constantly ventilated, it will dry the equipment out, it'll have a longer life, and it's also off, pulling all the off gases off of the equipment, and it's being expelled out of the building, not sort of like staying within the building Other things we came up with is, now we have more dedicated areas for EMS storage, workshops, and the scuba stuff, we have now a better fitness area and more ample storage area. So, here you can see in this diagram, we've sort of like broken the building out into different levels of groupings, so the blue in the front is actually all the administration pieces, so as you enter the building, you can enter the administration building and have conversations with operations without having to move through the station. The part that is the orange, that's sort of what we call the, the living quarters, but it's a more public area, that's where if you're gonna have meeting and training, people who are part of the department can move around that portion, there are the meeting room, the kitchen, the dining room, and the physical training could be at that. We then move into the yellow area, which is, we called the private area, so that's where the bunk rooms are, and also where all the toilet and shower areas are. They're immediately connected to the apparatus bay, so that kind of reducing the rate of response that you get up, outdoor, and go. There's these little purple squares right there, those are vestibules that are sort of like, have hand washing, they have different air changing, so that as you're moving from the apparatus bay back into the living quarters, you're supposed to stop, you're supposed to clean your boots off, you're supposed to wash your hands, so you're removing more and more of these carcinogenics from yourself, so that's where they talk about the dirty side, the clean side. This is also then set up that all sort of the operational dirty stuff, which is in the green, is in the far side of the bay. This is quick kind of overview of how this all relates on the site, as you can kind of see, the, the storage area that we have to the right side is going to be sort of like an addition adjacent to the, to the station, and then the actual addition for the living area is actually sort of wrapping around the existing. The existing building is a pre-engineered metal building, when we come back and do this construction, where all this stuff will be stick-built construction. Then based upon that, we sat down and looked at the cost of construction, and basically, we're in the neighborhood of rounding up here, sort of like 11 million dollars to do this, if we were doing the construction in 2026, and upon, based upon that, we've added the FFNE cost, which we have as $250,000, this includes things like computers and software and desks and furniture, so we're just doing some sizing, what might be, if this was a brand-new station, this is all the stuff you would have to add, there might be things that you already own, things you can repurpose, so, but that's just sort of a guideline of a number, and then design cost, this is typically 7% of the construction cost, this is sort of like a guideline of what the design cost would be. We then took those numbers and progressed them out to 26, then to 29, and to 31, so you can see how it's stepping up, so you're really going from 12 to 13 to 14 million dollars as time progresses. Then then came back and sort of broke out the different costs of the building in the different sections, so you can see that there's, the cost of construction varies from location to location, when the cost estimate is put together, he's not really just sitting there taking a lump sum and just basing upon the whole square foot of the building, each portion of the building has different levels of complexity. And then we talked about the possibility of how this building would be phased and keeping it in operation at the time, so, in the phase one, which is the blue piece, what we're thinking is that we would be able to build the support areas to the far side, and then build an expansion of the parking lot to the rear, so that would allow the, the operations to move, get all their supplies and equipment out of the existing building and slide it over to the far side. We also think there's a way of, of that, as we progress into the project further, that the administration area, the sleeping areas and all that can be transitioned over to that area for temporary, while they do the rest of the construction. The yellow piece, what we see is the, what we call the shell construction around the existing station, so you're still in operation with the whole station at this point in time, and then once that shell is done, then you would go through and you would do the total interior renovation, new renovation, new construction for the whole interiors. So, we're trying to progress, set this up so that though we say- So we're trying to progress, set this up so that though we say this is gonna be a 12 to 14-month project, we're not really seeing it as 14 months where the building is totally unusable. It's really phasing it over time. So there's probably a four-month period in which there's, you know, there's, the difficulty of operating out of the station will be the greatest. Then the next phase is upgrading the apparatus bay, and then what we do is go back and do the final repaving and upgrade of all the final site pieces. And here we just have a sort of like images of projects we've worked on to give you an idea of, you know, the, the quality and the different type of things that would happen, you know, upgraded kitchens. The middle picture down there is really what the PPE storage area looks like. We have individual lockers with all the different equipment in there, and this could be the future. And then we did sort of renderings of what the new station could possibly look like. Any questions? I'd be more than happy to answer.
I have one. Would the cost be the same if we were not operating the building at the, at the time of the construction?
It might be a little bit less because there will be costs associated with them having to do one phase, then another phase, and another phase. Yet at the same time, we felt there's, there's, unless you have a way of operating, but what was the cost of operating a temporary station? If that means if you're gonna have to rent trailers, if you have to put the truck someplace else, that's something that has to be determined.
I guess we wouldn't know that until we knew what we would save on doing it.
Quite possible. And where you would do that. So we have done projects before in which we've actually created tent structures that will hold the apparatus, and then you would come back and then you would get rent trailers that you would actually operate out of. So you have the cost of the tent, you have the cost of the renting the trailers, plus you have orders to hook up, and then you have to have the piece of land that is actually sitting on.
How long will we have to be out of the building if we found such a place that would house our department while you're doing construction?
I'm saying it's probably about a year. Construction may, the actual construction time might progress, might be longer than that, but really in tune to the fact that we would be looking for the contractors to be able to do their shop drawings, get everything approved, they've ordered all the materials. And so when they start the construction process, all that has been completed because we're having, you know, steel as part of this project. We can imagine that from the time they let the contract to the time construction starts could be close to three months while they do the shop drawings, order steel, order materials.
Right, and on the parking spaces, the ones that you're gonna take off the side, left side, right side of the building, are they gonna have the same number of parking behind or more?
There will, there'll end up being more parking spaces behind when we push that parking lot out.
Thank you.
Any additional questions at this time? Chief, you gonna be getting fit in that fitness center?
What are you trying to say?
I wasn't trying to say anything. I was just looking at it, I was like, man, anybody gonna use that, that bike, that treadmill? What's going on?
I think the chief can share with you some numbers of why fitness centers are added or fitness rooms is not a center. It's probably not any bigger than my office if you can, everybody's been in there, it's not a very large room. He can give you statistics on what physical fitness does, but, and we would also offer that up to their colleagues in the police department who do not have the access to that as well. So they all work as a team, and they'll be able to get in 24 hours a day.
That's a settling point.
We will, we will be talking about this in a little bit more detail in reference to the, the cost aspect from these numbers at the retreat of what, from a deck capacity standpoint, based on our financial policies, we'll be sharing that information with you at the retreat of, of what is doable, what, what wouldn't be. Keep in mind too, within five years from now, our ladder truck will be in need of replacement. It's about three years for that to be constructed, and that is estimated in today's dollars at three to 3.5 million. So if you, we'll, we'll look at that combination of doing both and give you some more details of what that looks like from going to seek a bond in, in the future in order to pay for this type of capital project.
One, one quick thing, and it can go your way or your way or chief. The PPE room where it's all, the stuff is being stored, and you talked about the ventilation and, and I know this is something we can discuss later too, but the air that's exiting that room will all be, I expect to be filtered, so it's not just going out into the air. Because you said it's gonna be have extra ventilation.
Yes, yes, right, yes. So it's, we, it's actually filtered, and also we end up doing a lot of heat exchanging so that as things get exhausted, we're re, you know, as we're capturing the impurities and also trying to recapture some of the heat that we can pump back into the building.
Thank you.
Out of curiosity, has there been any thought process about the possibility of this being the appropriate place to do all this with the possibility of being in a flood zone?
Actually, I could get Ms. Atkins out here, but in the new rendition of the flood zone, it is not in the 100-year flood plain as far as, we wouldn't be able to do what we're doing with the building.
I may be wrong, but I believe at one time that was underwater as far as when we had floods. Not completely, but the old water plant was there at one time, and we did have a flood that covered it.
In 1972, the major flood?
Yeah, when Bob's supermarket was out there and...
But I, I think that site has been built up since then.
It has, most of it is in the 500-year.
Does that hurt?
It's not in the 100-year, it's in the 500-year now.
It's, it's now in the 500-year flood zone for most of that area, not in the 100-year. So it does not have to, it does not have additional standards to be built to in the 500-year.
Right, well, my, my, I guess my question is, is there a possibility? I mean, it's happened before.
But it, it was at a different level at that time is what she's saying.
Oh, the elevation has been, has been raised?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The other, we, we have, the chief and I have talked about that. We, another location we build brand-new, we, we don't have any other property. So if we were to buy a piece of property, that adds to the cost of the project as well.
Right, and then... I just wanted to make sure we weren't spending a whole lot of money and then end up with water problems.
Right, and the other option, I, it's like we're talking about before, the infrastructure's all there. So if you end up going to a new location, you have to bring all the infrastructure in, and there's a benefit because now you're doing a redevelopment of previously developed property as opposed to developing a virgin site.
Mr. Davis, that ladder truck you referenced, is that the, our big ladder truck?
That's the one that we just replaced the engine after six months of being in.
It's the only one regionally that reaches the top of the Longwood Towers, is that accurate?
The closest one is Blackstone, correct?
So, okay, definitely an important one for multiple entities in town, all right.
Does this fire station take into account of our growing department?
Yes, it, it has enough bunk spaces if I calculated it correctly for, I think it's 12, yeah.
Growing fire trucks? Lots of fire trucks? I mean, if we, if we needed them in the future, I mean...
Well, we have, Daniel, you can speak to that.
I mean, are we gonna have more space built in for housing the fire trucks?
Well, our bays, our bays really won't change in size, but with the apparatus we have now, we kind of have every piece of apparatus that we would need, so there wouldn't be any additional apparatus going forward. Let's say it does accommodate the 12 extra firemen, so as the growth of adding paid staff, and we still keeping our volunteers, they stay from time to time, so that way it can accommodate all of those. Our goal here, we also built in that first administrative area, broke out a couple other small office spaces for that future growth. You know, right now we have one office, and that's, that's all that's there. You know, as you grow, you're gonna need other administrative offices, I say those sleeping quarters, so as we try to plant all of that in, so this addition renovations will last us well into the future.
Government doesn't normally do a great job of building for the future. We mostly build for what we need when we need it. This building is a perfect example. We, day we moved in, it was full. Prior locality I was in, we had to build a new courthouse, and we were determined that we weren't gonna build a building that we were gonna outgrow or already be at capacity when we did that. And that was finished in 2013, and as far as I know, as of today, there is still a, it's, 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 it's roughed in, it's painted, but it could be converted into a fourth courtroom in the future if that's ever needed. Most government buildings don't do that and think beyond today for what they may need in future years for those types of departments. This would give us that capacity.
So with all these upgrades, what would be the lifespan of this building before we would probably need to? I'm not talking about for growth, I'm just talking about the building itself and remodeling, totally revamp.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's anything, like, I mean, we, we've got it in the budget for this building. This building was open in 2007, and we've repainted the police department, we put in new floors, we're getting ready in this budget year that we're currently in and painting the floor, the, the main floor. In the coming budget, we'll budget for this level. So, I mean, all of those are gonna have to be done, it's, it's similar to your house. I mean, you, you gotta do some maintenance or, or show.
If you were ever to outgrow this renovation, you would never look to redo it again, you would look to add on a substation somewhere across town and split your assets to have that a response.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Complete?
Yeah, we have any other additional questions for Mr. Gilbert at this time? Not here, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Jake Romaine on the Farmville Downtown Partnership. Just the most dressed up you've ever been to this meeting, sir?
Good evening. Just here to talk about our, we're gonna recap the 2024 work plan that the Farmville Downtown Partnership accomplished and the upcoming 2025 work plan as well. There we go. Oh, wow, the view of this thing is teeny, all right. So we had the, this is the recap of the 2024 work plan and what was accomplished. The Events and Promotions Committee did the Farmville Art Walk with the Central Virginia Arts. We did a couple of summer sippin' shops. We welcomed back the Longwood and Hampton City students. We did like a contest for local downtown retailers to kind of decorate with Longwood and Hampton City colors. We partnered with Piedmont Senior Resources to do the Duck Derby, and of course, our big headline event, Rock the Block, Halloween Costume Contest, Holidays on Main. And then we also partnered with Grateful Fed to serve seniors with Piedmont Senior Resources as well. I believe that was over 100 meals during the holiday season. We also did a downtown district boundary expansion that was carried out by the Economic Vitality Committee along with some interns as well. Expanded the boundary almost to double its size, the old boundary. We also did a board training, which was carried out by the CNE Group. We updated publications for the downtown district, including a historical publication about suggested best practices when maintaining historic buildings. The big one is the VMS Downtown Investment Grant, which was carried out by the Design Committee. The, there were seven properties, nine addresses total. The VMS Virginia Main Street gave us $50,000. Farmville Downtown Partnership kicked in some money. The total of that was over $100,000 of public and private investment, which led to a lot of great outcomes. We have before and after pictures here from the Downtown Investment Grant, which is the facade grant. This is 225 North Main Street, 308, 117, 214, 140, 138, and 136, and then 108 and 110. And we have the upcoming, the 2025 work plan, which is the one that I passed out for everybody. We're gonna continue on with a lot of the Promotions Committee events. One of the big ones that we added is Farmville Fridays, which is a revitalization of the JC's First Fridays, or I think the last name of it was Live at Riverside. So we're gonna try to keep that going. There's a bunch of dates that we've selected where Farmville Downtown Partnership is gonna partner with different nonprofit partners for each event. So one of the issues that nonprofits have right now is shrinking pool of volunteers. I think we just heard that from the Fire Department as well, I think everybody's struggling with volunteers, right? So partnering with other nonprofit partners gives us the ability to keep volunteers at these events and, and keep this thing going. Of course, that will culminate with Rock the Block, and then we also have, we have a couple of different things in the Economic Vitality Committee, including residential parking downtown, sign ordinance, updating kiosks, and some of these are with the Downtown Investment Grant 2.0, so it'll be like another facade grant. The match will be a little bit different, last match was two to one, this one will probably be one to one. Of course, now that all the ARPA funds are shrinking, some of the rules are also changing a little bit, and we're kind of just moving with that as we go. And the last big thing is the SMART grant, which is a, it's gonna be a planning grant, it's $40,000. We've been awarded it, it's for an ongoing plan for the downtown, like a downtown master plan, basically. So of course, we'll engage Scott with that a lot along the way as we go. Our previous funding cycle, we were in the $60,000 a year range, and we're requesting a slight increase to $65,000 a year, kind of inflation, cost of everything is up, as everybody knows, so a little bit more money to help offset some of our costs with our paid staff is, is what we're hoping for. So thank you very much, and if you guys have any questions, hopefully I have the answer, right?
Any questions for Mr. Romaine at this time? Not here, Nate, thank you for presenting and for giving us the, the... Not hearing any, thank you for, uh, presenting and for, uh, giving us the, the two thousand twenty-five work plan, I look forward to reading it.
Fantastic, thank you.
Next up is the Finance Report, Ms. Julie Moore with the Finance Report.
Good evening, you have the December charts and reports in front of you, this is our six month of the budget, um, this year. When we look at revenue to budget, overall, our actual revenue is below budgeted revenue, and that's due to seasonal patterns that impact our year-to-date collection percentages. Other factors that contribute, um, to the actual revenues not matching the budgeted amounts are grants, which are tied to distributions, to specific project timelines, and things like that. Revenue compared to prior year, there are two funds that it's below, the General Fund and the Airport Fund. The General Fund's below prior year's, um, revenue, because last year, we recognized the A B M lease proceeds, and we don't have any of those proceeds this year. Um, and as we've discussed in the past, the Airport Fund just has less projects ongoing this year. When you look at expenses to budget, overall, total expenses are currently below the six month mark, however, there are some individual funds that are over, and we've talked about these in the last two or three months of what's causing that, but we anticipate that by the end of the year, everything will be below budget. When you look at expenses versus prior year, um, we are above prior year, and again, we've discussed these in the past, um, these increases reflect planned expenditures that were necessary, projects, or equipments that we have budgeted in fiscal year twenty-five. So do you have any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Moore at this time?
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Uh, next item up is discussion, amend official zoning map to rezone approximately one point nine two four acres from R one to B three, ordinance number two three eight. Who's speaking to this, Mr. David?
Uh, Ms. Atkins will be, but, um, Ms. Austin, Atkins, Austin, Austin, one of them. Um, uh, all of these go together, uh, when you're, until you get to the, uh, number twelve, I think it is, uh, they're all tied to the same project, just so everybody on council knows, um, and, um, she'll be handling each one of these, um, for discussion, it is , uh, on your next week's meeting for, uh, public hearing.
And this is all concerning the Dominion property, right, all those?
Correct, the rezoning and two conditional uses are for the Dominion project. So we'll start with the rezoning. The request is to rezone three parcels, tax map numbers zero zero two three, A zero nine, one five, zero zero dash zero zero A, B, and zero zero twenty-three, A, nine, A thirty B. Um, it contains approximately one point nine two four acres, it's gonna rezone from R one, low-density residential to B three highway commercial. The rezoning aims to designate all Dominion Energy, Virginia Electric and Power Company-owned parcels in the East Third Street Millwood Road area to the same zoning district. Dominion Energy proposes to rezone these parcels as part of its project to expand the existing facilities and operations of the existing Dominion Energy site. Parcel A currently contains a manufactured home with an accessory building, parcel B is mostly undeveloped, and parcel thirty B contains an existing communication tower. Virginia Power received a conditional use permit for the communications tower in January of nineteen ninety-nine. The initiation of change was made by application of the owner, public hearings were held by the Planning Commission on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, and January fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. The future land use map shows this area as undesignated, sitting between general commercial and institutional designations. The applicant will coordinate with public works on using and/or abandoning existing facilities, uh, town utilities on the site. The proposed expansion to the Dominion Energy Site is not expected to have an impact on town streets or the transportation system. There are no known environmental impacts on the subject site, no public comments were received, and the Planning Commission voted seven to O to, seven to O to recommend approval to amend the official zoning map for this rezoning. I can take any questions about the staff report, and I do have a, a member from Timmons Group in the, in the audience that, uh, can answer questions about the project.
Any questions at this time? Not hearing any, I did watch the, I think it was thirty-six minutes of the Planning Commission meeting, it seemed like that was a pretty quick meeting for the Planning Commission, uh, and yeah, it didn't, it seemed all seven O straight votes, uh, and, uh, not too many hiccups involved. Uh, if there's no questions on that, we can move through those three and move into, uh, conditional use permit to allow single-family residents in B two transitional commercial zoning district, and this is for seven oh nine East Third Street.
Yes, sir. Uh, this request is to allow a single-family dwelling detached, uh, the site is seven oh nine East Third Street and consists of one parcel. Adjacent commercial uses include general office space and retail space, there are single-family dwellings to the rear of the property on Longwood Avenue. Uh, there is an existing dwelling on-site that has been vacant for more than two years. Per town code, any non-conforming structure needs to brought in, brought into, um, compliance before you can make changes. There are no standards for the specific use listed in twenty-nine thirty-five. Uh, the future land use, uh, map of the comprehensive plan designates this area as mixed-use commercial. Uh, it's intended to be a transitional zone between downtown commercial areas and residential areas. This application appears to meet the standards for review for conditional use permits, there is no significant impacts to utility or transportation systems, and no impacts to environmental or to adjacent properties. Uh, the staff did receive two phone calls from adjacent property owners, they were looking more for information on what the conditional use permit was for, uh, they did not have any objection, they were both in favor of the project. Again, the Planning Commission voted seven to O to recommend approval of C U P twenty-five dash zero zero two, uh, with one condition, and that condition is that the applicant provide adequate off-street parking, uh, for the residence. And the applicant is in the audience, if you have any questions about the project.
Anybody, any questions on the project at hand on East Third? Uh, I will say, I, I, they broadcast the Planning Commission meetings on YouTube, and I listen to them, I don't watch them, uh, so I didn't know who spoke, but I appreciated the, the gentleman who spoke and said that, you know, you routinely hear from young folks, that it's hard to find, uh, places to, to live here in town, and you're seizing upon that moment to do something about it, and we appreciate that. Not hearing any questions, thank you, Mrs., uh, Austin. And speaking of Planning Commission, that'll take us into the Planning Commission two thousand twenty-four Annual Report, is anybody presenting on the Annual Report, or we just have it for our reading pleasure?
It's just for you to have, you can, um, uh, vote next week that, uh, you, you've received it. Uh, it's, it's a, it's a requirement by law that they were, they provide you with their actions in a, a yearly report to the governing body.
I will say, I appreciated the, uh, invitation from the Planning Commission to host a few, uh, at least starting with one, uh, joint meetings between council and commission to, uh, continue to, to understand each other and, and move efficiently, I appreciated that gesture, and, uh, look forward to putting that on the calendar. Uh, and so, if there are no questions concerning the Annual Report at this time, we can move to the Board of Zoning Appeals two thousand twenty-four Annual Report. Uh, we have that, that is in the record as well, public record, um, do we have any questions concerning the Board of Zoning Appeals Annual Report at this time? Not hearing any, I believe, Mr. Davis, this, uh, item number fifteen is you, discussion on building official position.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you all a heads up that, uh, you know, we had discussed a few years ago with the county, they've been, um, lending their building official to us, uh, for assistance, and, uh, I think the council at some point wanted to have their own building official back in a position, and so, um, hopefully, next week, I will be able to bring to you, um, uh, by state building code, um, my, my, my hiring has to be appointed, uh, approved, if you will, by the council, uh, it's one of those that is in state law, so, um, I'm looking to, uh, bring to you next week that, um, it'll be, uh, our own internal, uh, person, uh, that's been working with us for over almost a year and a half, um, to, to fill that position of building official.
Any questions at this time? Not hearing any, Mr. Davis, do you have a Town Manager's Report?
Um, I have, uh, some updates, um, Grove Street Park has been completed, that was in the capital improvement project for this year, um, so the, uh, enhancement of, um, adding, um, new equipment, taking out some old, uh, recreation equipment, uh, is complete, and, uh, in the near future, we will be, um, uh, was in, I've seen a conversation with, uh, a council member that it's in their ward, um, some aesthetics, but also some things that could be of, uh, potential hazard that's been there for a long time, uh, railroad ties, and so we'll be removing those and, and filling in, uh, where those were, uh, here in the near future. Uh, we're still working and waiting for our finished, uh, product for the, um, you bathrooms, um, uh, at, at the splash pad, uh, a, a final rendering of, of those, which you'll get those, just like I did when we brought the, uh, fire station here to you. Um, I am happy to, uh, announce that we did get the N F C, uh, grant for the Fitness, uh, Court Studio, uh, so, um, if you all, uh, are still in support, uh, we will begin budgeting that two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars into this coming year's budget. At the same time, uh, we will look at, uh, applying for, uh, the Centra, um, Centra Grant Committee, uh, has operational and capital, uh, grants, so that doesn't occur, though, until, um, March, and then they don't award till September, uh, however, we'll be in the process of having to be in, in construction and things like that, so that'll just offset our cost if we are awarded that. I've also reached out to some of our, uh, part of this grant program is to have community support, uh, in nonprofit organizations, and so I've reached out to our, uh, local Lions and Rotary Club to see if they'd be willing to, uh, give something towards this, and then they would all have, obviously, uh, recognition for this as well, and tied to, um, once it's finally completed, uh, kind of like when, uh, the, the existing playground that started that whole park area looks like, uh, from that donation, um, so I'm ha- happy to report that, so that'll continue to grow that area, uh, in recreational purposes. Um, we were one of, I can't remember how many they said in Virginia, um, to, to, to be awarded this, and it, and one of the things they look at is how much activity you have, and so that, there's, obviously, there's an app for that, uh, that they look at, uh, honestly, uh, 'cause they showed it to me in our conversations, and the people that use, I mean, sometimes, I don't know how, unless you use it or you go out there and you sit and watch, but you wouldn't think, but there's significant use of the Serateri and the Dogwood Trail that, uh, and that's what they want, they don't want a, a ward and, uh, locality where it's not in that active zone of people are already exercising and things like that, and so, uh, we did get that as well. Um, but for tonight, the, those are my key things to, to bring you up to date, and then, um, by next week, I'll have some other updates, hopefully.
Thank you, that is exciting. Um, I'll go around the table, Mr. Hardy?
I'm good tonight.
Mr. Hunter?
Oh, yes, I have a couple of things.
Yes, I have a couple of things. Uh, one, um, on this digest, as we learn to agree to disagree, but, and I disagree on something that took place at the General Assembly, but what I'm gonna say is in reference to dwelling into it, I'm gonna say, if we're gonna attend a meeting as, as a body, or as three, four, five, or six of us, can we please get the clerk to send out something saying that we're gonna be there, and the names of the people that are gonna be there, um, at any of the meetings that we're gonna attend, instead of some of us being announced and some of us not? And then my next thing is, I had a question, uh, are we growing tires at, at the new place in Farmville, are we growing tires, because all we see is tires when you go by a place on, um, the old Dollar Bills? And, um, I would just ask if we can address that?
And there's no trailer?
And, yeah, there's no trailer.
That's that new business over there. And that's a valid point about the clerk announcement, thank you. Mr. Yeller?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Parrott?
All good.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yeah, I'm not sure, this is, this is a big, big thing, but it's kind of, I was a little bit alarmed, um, a town resident, I saw the other night at the Y, he said, have you walked on the, um, Dogwood Trail lately? And I said, not really, um, but I did, and he was concerned about the number of, if you're starting on High Street, heading toward the hospital on the left-hand side of the trail, there's a remarkable, almost catastrophic tree downage there, which is probably, he, he tied into the fact of the dam and, and whatever, but it is a low wetland, but I am, if you haven't walked it, it, there's, there's something going on there that seems significantly harmful to the, the local, that area, I mean, there's just literally hundreds and hundreds of trees down, so, and it's, it's always wet, I get it, but it seems to be, the fact that those trees were there to be down indicates that they were there at one point thriving, and something seems to be off about that, so I don't know if it, what one does about something like that, but I think it would be, um, for an incredibly wonderful area, it's, it's looking pretty safe right now, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Reed?
I have a list. No, I gotta echo, um, Councilman Hunter, he was at the event last week at Capitol, and incident happened that, um, I haven't seen happen in my years being on council. Um, we go somewhere as a delegation, and then some of us get recognized, and some not get recognized, and you're sitting together, and it was kind of embarrassment because we had other localities asking, you know, what was that about? So, we need to be cautioned how we, um, go into a place, or we text names to whoever's down on the floor, or whatever, but anyway, um, you gotta think about what you're doing, you know, we need to be more careful, so, um, if you're gonna go as a delegation, you know, you should be represented as a delegation, that's, that's one thing, so. Uh, the other thing, we have a lot of streetlights out in town of Farmville, I don't know, I think I brought this up before, um, I don't know who, who controls the streetlights, um, got cars about trash cans still be left on the sidewalks in neighborhoods, and, um, need to be, uh, checked out, and our little thing is, works like bathrooms, did they get painted, or something?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay. That's it?
Ms. Amos?
Nothing.
Yes?
Thought Mr. Reed was gonna mention it, um, we're gonna have a, a eight oh one District Ward C and D meeting, um, March the nineteenth, I believe, so, I understand, Mr. Reed, um, we'll be getting flyers out, everybody's welcome to attend, uh, we'll be probably in the E O C, um, come out and listen to Scott talk. Oh, yes, and the county administrator as well.
Oh, man, that's the place to be, right there, be careful. Uh, I'll save, uh, my- I'll save my report for next week and, and say that, yes, and echo just generally some sentiments in that, it's sentiments that I've expressed before. This is a body of folks who endeavor to be collegiate and to work together for the betterment of this town. And it's comprised of folks who are largely giving of their time to do so. And it's largely been a very collegial group for a long time. And we need to work to maintain that. If we want to maintain trust in government through being transparent, being decent, and working together. And I know that those values are shared by all of us and it's just incumbent upon us to live them and exhibit them. And I'll leave it at that. I'll have a longer report next meeting. But at this time, we're gonna go into a closed session. And I believe Mr. Hardy is reading us in.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Farmville Town Council convene in closed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia in accordance with the provisions of paragraph A1 of section 2.2-3711 for the discussion of prospective candidates for Farmville Industrial Development Authority appointments and discussion of the contractual payment for legal services provided by the town attorney.
Second. Motion, second. Ms. Kay, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Parrott?
Yes.
Mr. Yolan?
Yes.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mrs. Amos?
Yes.
All right, we'll go into closed session. Thank you. See you on the other side.